Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Smythe. Mayor Pressing.
Here.
The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have November 3rd, 2014. And a special meeting of the committee of the whole, but we'll do them separately. Are there motions?
I move approval of the per set of minutes.
A second.
Did you move approval of which one?
I move approval, I guess the first one to move approval of is just two weeks ago. Is that correct?
Well, it's November 3rd.
November 3rd, which is just two weeks ago. Yes, I move approval of the minutes for the meeting of the council on November 3rd.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Diane.
Yes. On page 2, item D, under Council Member Input. I think for, just for purposes of clarification in the public record, the sentence that reads "Mayor Pressing and Alderman Roberts addressed the burnt buildings issue", I think we should specify Urbana Town Homes demolition.
So, which one are you on?
Page 2, item D, under-
I guess I can't see the page numbers where I'm turning this here. Okay. Oh, Council Member, "Address the burnt buildings issues". Oh, you want to say of Urbana Town Homes?
Yeah, just to be specific. And then the same thing on page 4. Item H, 3rd paragraph. Replace Learman Avenue and Washington Street fire buildings with Urbana Town Homes demolition. Item H, 3rd paragraph.
Okay. Urbana Town Homes. Is that okay, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Any other additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Then we have the next set of minutes, which is- You don't have to, you want to do them next week? Okay, that is fine. Additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any. And then I have appointments. Elizabeth Hannan to the Police Pension Fund Board on May, ending May 31st, 2015. And Elizabeth Hannan to the Fireman's Pension Board for a term ending June 30th, 2016.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, we are at petitions and communications. I have two people. And I actually have three people. They're all sitting in the audience. Okay, Robert Naaman.
Thank you, Mayor Pressing, for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Robert Naaman, I live at 802 East California in Urbana in Ward 5. Dennis Roberts is my alderman. I come to address you on an item which is not on your agenda this evening. It concerns the levy that supports the Urbana Free Library. I have heard that the Urbana Library is facing budget problems. That didn't surprise me, knowing that forces outside of Urbana have decided that Carla Hospital shall be exempt from Urbana taxation. And knowing that the library is heavily dependent on property tax. But then I heard people say that raising the library levy had been ruled out or was impossible or couldn't be considered as a way of addressing a shortfall in the library's budget. And that didn't make sense to me. This is not an issue that I follow, I have followed. I freely concede my ignorance and lack of civic engagement in this regard. But it surprised me to hear people say that in Urbana, in this circumstance, raising the library levy would be ruled out. So I come to ask the council not to rule that out as a potential solution. I've handed you a petition that I circulated on MoveOn. Some 20-odd people have signed it. The petition simply says, "The Urbana City Council and the Urbana Free Library Board should consider raising the Urbana Property Tax Levy to support services provided to Urbana residents by the Urbana Free Library before considering cuts to services provided by the library to Urbana residents, such as cutting library hours." So that's my request to you as members of the council. My understanding is that this is a decision ultimately made by the council setting the levy. I ask you not to rule out, not to take off the table for consideration, the possibility of raising the Urbana Library Levy to cover shortfalls in the library's budget. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jacobson.
If, without, you know, with the proviso that you shouldn't violate any confidences or private conversations, where did you get the idea that we had ruled out or were likely to rule out consideration of raising the levy?
I prefer not to answer that question.
Okay.
Bill?
Just to fill in a little bit more information, at the library board meeting last, two weeks ago? Whenever it was, I think it was two weeks ago. There was a proposed levy, I guess proposed by city staff, to keep the library levy flat. And so the board discussed, you know, what our options would be under that scenario. I think it was understood that ultimately the city council decides what the levy's going to be and how it's going to be distributed if we decide to keep the city rate the same, you know, how much we'd go to the library. But yeah, I think the conversation started about the levy, the dollar amount levy for the library has been flat for about five years.
I will say that the assessed value of Urbana has gone down 2%. And the concern is the overall tax rate in Urbana. If our tax rate is 25% higher than Champagne's, which it is right now, that is a deadly situation for Urbana. So, in the past, last year, this council agreed to hold our tax rate constant because we knew that the schools and the Park District rates would go up. So this year, I am proposing that we also keep the rate constant. And I've talked with the library about letting their dollars remain constant. Their rate would go slightly up, which means we've got to take the hit in the general fund. So we're working on that now. But I do, I think you need to understand what it means to the whole city to have that tax rate go up. And I do not think that the majority of the people in the city of Urbana want us to raise the taxes. We're already way higher than our neighbor Champagne. We're doing everything we can to lower the rate. That's why we're doing the enterprise zone. That's why we're doing all kinds of things. And that's why we're in court. Eric?
I just have a legal question for Mr. Simon. Can the library board raise specifically the library levy? Or, how does that work? I understand that the library levy doesn't pay for the entire library. But what is the, what is, what are the, what, who has the authority, through what process, to decide on the library levy itself?
I would have to research that. But I believe the way it works is the library board requests a certain levy rate. The city council, the city actually does the levy, as it chooses to do the levy. The rate, or the levy rate is capped by statute. It can only go up to a certain amount. I don't know if it's there now or not. And in terms of using the funds, the funds received, or the tax dollars received are deposited in the library fund for the library board's use. The city council and no one with the city itself has the authority to dictate how the library expends its money. But I'd have to research in terms of whether the board, the board cannot just set any levy that it desires or believes it needs.
May I ask a follow-up question? The library board does not have its own council. So would it be part of your area of responsibility to advise the board on the legal aspects of this as they move forward?
That's a difficult question. In the past, I have provided legal advice to the executive director upon request. I've also advised very lengthy projects, so far none of which I've encountered. They would be better off retaining their own council. The problem you raise places me in a conflict of interest. And my client is you all, the city, not the library board. So if I'm advising the library board in one respect and have to advise you all in another respect on the same issue, I am now, I am then placed in a conflict of interest. And in that instance, I would not entertain the library board's request for counsel.
Okay.
That's not to say I can't provide counsel to you all. And if you share it with the library board, that's fine. But I can't, I can't represent conflicting parties.
So in summary, there is a, if the library board were to need legal counsel in a way that, in a matter that was potentially disagreement with either this council or this administration, then there's really a problem in sorting all of that out, isn't there?
Yes, there is one way around it. And that is if the library board and the city council agree in a detailed writing on a particular issue to waive the conflict of interest. I'm bound by the Code of Professional Responsibility of 2010. And the last thing I want to do is violate the ethical code.
Sure. Okay, so there, okay, so there is a procedure to, there is a formal procedure where that could be waived.
Yes, I would have to draft that request. If both the city and the library board asked for that, I would draft the request. I'd have to know exactly what they want. Research on what counsel both parties want. And then the president of the board, I presume, would have to sign that. And the mayor would have to approve that.
Okay, thank you.
I would point out that the general fund of the city is subsidizing the library. We pay for their IMRF and their social security.
May I respond to the mayor? It's all right. So first of all, to your first point, Mayor Pressing, I'm quite aware of the context that you describe in terms of the reputation of Urbana with respect to Champagne, so on and so forth. And I don't fault you for putting those issues in the foreground. I don't think that that means in the current case that raising the Urbana Library Levy should be ruled off the table of discussion.
Nothing's being ruled out of discussion. So you should know that.
But that's all I'm asking. But that's all I'm asking.
I'm just telling you what my position is. But people are, you know, the Urbana City Council, it does not shy from discussion. I can tell you that.
Okay, so that's why I'm here. To make that, make that request of the Urbana City Council, that this not be ruled out of discussion. And I am aware of what you described in terms of the finances of the city and the library being historically entangled. And as I, I think probably we don't want to get into this here, but as I understand it, there's some potential shift maybe being contemplated in the relations that have happened around that in the past. And that may be part of the shortfall that the library is facing is receiving different less assistance from the city than it has received in the past. And I think that is germane to the question of whether the, whether, of considering raising the library levy. If the city is going to fail to give assistance that it provided in the past, then that seems to me to, that that should push forward the question of raising the library levy so that the library can access other resources to replace resources that the city is not going to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kaitlyn Gill and Derek Liebert?
Good evening. My name is Kaitlyn Lil, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I read it wrong.
And Derek and I are here as staff people representing the Urbana Park District. We know that tonight you're going to be considering ordinance number 2014-11-106, which is to permit electronic message board displays on signs in the conservation, recreation, and education zone. To our understanding, it was our request for a new electronic sign along Main Street next to our Phillips Recreation Center building that prompted this ordinance to be considered. And since this is a very visual topic, we wanted to give you an opportunity to actually see the sign that we're proposing to construct next to the Phillips Recreation Center. Are they? Okay. Not that one. This one, 1117. No, still wrong.
No problem.
Excellent, thank you very much. So this is the sign that's currently in place. A fairly standard marquee that takes staff quite a bit of time to update when we need to. It's maybe updated once a month at this time. Hopefully more frequently, depending on, again, staff time and the events that we have taking place. It is an older sign. It definitely shows its age. And we are proposing to replace it with, here, let's show this one first, with a digital sign that's very similar in character to the current marquee sign that's there. This is a conceptual drawing. We have no issue with having our digital sign match the ordinance requirements, which the contractors would absolutely be taking into account should the ordinance pass. And then within context, the sign will be moved slightly further east from where the current marquee is located and slightly back off of the sidewalk, again, to match what the ordinance requirements are. This would allow us to promote multiple events at a time. We know that the ordinance requires that the sign change no more often than every three minutes. We have no issue with that. And requires no animation, which is, again, not a problem for us. We feel that this will help us promote the events that are taking place throughout the Urbana Park District at the location where we sell the majority of registrations, membership passes, et cetera. And we welcome any questions that you have about the sign that we have proposed.
Bill?
The sign you have currently, that's, is that backlit? So it's lit at night?
It is.
Do you have any idea what the brightness of that is in some of these same measures that we're, that we have in the current ordinance as far as difference from ambient?
I-
We've been advised by our signage contractor that this will be less bright than what we have today.
Okay. And do you have any plans like for, well, I guess this ordinance would give you the right to have a sign at Crystal Lake Park Pool or in places like that? I have heard some concern about signs like this in a conservation area like Buzy Woods. I can't imagine that anybody would, that you'd get much mileage out of putting one there. But I guess just for my satisfaction, do you plan on putting one in Buzy Woods?
Sure. We do not have any intention at the moment of installing any other electronic signs on any of our properties. That being said, there definitely is a place for electronic signs in even some of these odder locations such as Buzy Woods. For example, we've been working on interpretive signage in multiple locations. And people have proposed to us before having a small sign that's powered by a solar panel that would talk about what's happening at that location. That is not what we have, and we, that's not what we have in mind at the moment. And we don't personally feel that it fits the character of our Urbana Parks. But that would leave the window open should staff in the future decide that that is what they'd like to pursue.
Staff response to the idea of the electronic sign for Menlo Brook interpretation was rather diverse. We felt like it was contrary to the category of that type of park. We feel like Phillips, where we sell the majority of our passes and we advertise currently today, is a much better spot for such a sign.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I won't ask if there's anyone else who would like to address the council because there's nobody else here. Okay, unfinished business. We have ordinance number 2014-08-075, an ordinance amending the City of Urbana 2005 Comprehensive Plan. And this is the Active Choices Champagne County Greenways and Trails Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, an updated ordinance to adopt the Champagne County, or Active Choices Champagne County Greenways and Trails Plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. The Active Choices, Active Choices Plan contains maps, goals, and project lists for the development of off-street trails and greenways throughout the entire county. The proposed plan, or the maps in the plan would replace Appendix C in the comprehensive plan. Appendix C is Greenways and Trails Classification Map. Currently, we're going off of the 2004 Greenways and Trails map as our Appendix C. The Active Choices Plan was compiled by the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission. It was a two-year process guided by a policy and technical committees with, which consisted of staff members from various bodies, including the City of Urbana. The RPC held numerous workshops and public forums. And after a public review period, the plan was submitted to the Illinois Department of Transportation. They received some comments back, and the plan was accepted by the state earlier this year. City Council reviewed the plan on August 4th. At that meeting, the council had asked for some additional review of the plan by the Urbana Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. So we brought that, the plan, back to the BPAC for their comments in September. At that meeting, the BPAC agreed that the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan should be the controlling document for bicycle paths in the city once it becomes adopted later this year or early next year. But the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission recommended adopting this Active Choices Plan in the meanwhile as an amendment to the comprehensive plan with no substantial changes. Plan Commission then reviewed the plan again. Plan Commissioners asked for staff to identify inconsistencies between the Active Choices Plan and city's adopted plans in the comprehensive plan. There were a few inconsistencies identified. They're attached to your memo as Exhibit D. And the Plan Commissioner also asked for the best way to move forward. And after recommendation by staff, the Plan Commission has recommended that city council adopt the Active Choices Plan as an amendment to the Urbana Comprehensive Plan with the stipulation that any inconsistencies identified in the Active Choices Plan as compared to other city-prepared plans shall not be adopted. And the city's existing and future plans shall prevail. So we've updated the adopting ordinance to reflect those recommendations. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Bill?
Yeah, I think this is a good solution to make sure that we have the most recent plan available to work from. I did, going through the plan, I noticed something I didn't ask about last time that I meant to. And it wasn't in the maps you gave us, but it was in the original plan. There was an area between Main Street and the railroad tracks marked as a study area. Can you, do you know anything about that?
Okay.
And I forget which map it was on.
Oh.
And by the way, thanks for bringing both of these 300-plus-page documents to us on the same night for approval.
You're welcome.
But it's not, it's not your fault. I know we put them off.
Yep. I think the area you're talking about, is that near the MTD facility?
No, I think it was like across the street from the old nursing home between Main Street and the railroad tracks.
Okay. Yeah.
I guess it'd be south of MTD.
Don't think I have to-
I think it just said further study or study corridor, study area. I couldn't tell because it was pretty small on the map. But if you don't remember, I could-
They did have a couple areas marked as future study areas. And I don't have that with me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, that'll be interesting to study that, I think.
Yeah.
Sure.
I believe the study area is just the potential rail to trail opportunity for the Norfolk Southern Railroad area.
So like a connection, a path connection or something?
Yes, yeah. Right now, the rail still exists.
It's currently zoned light industrial, a lot of that through there. But it's right on the bicycle paths. And it might be worth looking at to see if we could encourage some other kind of bicycle-friendly living arrangements or something like that because it's so handy to downtown and maybe some residential use. But if it's going to be studied, I'd be interested in talking about that.
Oh, Diane?
Thanks, Jeff. I do plan on supporting this. I think the ordinance that we have today gives us the flexibility that we need as a city while still incorporating this into our comprehensive plan. But a couple of the commissioners raised an issue that occurred to me too. And that was, how do we make all of these plans, the comprehensive plan, the greenways plan, the bike plan, accessible and usable both internally and externally? And I don't know whether that involves layering these plans on the website or somehow figuring out a way to integrate them so that the public can see how they all work together and what the relationships are. And I know it's something that's not going to be done in the short term. But is that something that's on the radar for the city to do?
Yes, it is.
Or if it's already done, I'd like to know where it is.
Well, no, it's on the radar. We do have a webpage that lists city plans. But I don't think it lists all of these external plans. So something we're planning on doing is, on the comprehensive plan website, adding a page that would have a list of all the plans that have been adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. And then with links to those original documents and a little description.
Well, I've seen the lists, and they're daunting because we just have an extremely long list of plans and studies that have been done. But what I guess I'm asking, I think what the commissioners were getting at, is how do you integrate some of these plans that are closely related so that people can make sense of how they coordinate together? And I don't, I don't have the answer for that. But I'm just hoping that with technology and, there ought to be a way for us to visually show how these things are connected and how they work together. And whether to use the comprehensive plan as our foundation and then layer things on top of it. And you can peel away the plans and look at, I don't know. I just, I'm not sure how it would work. But I just keep thinking there are- there ought to be a way to make them more usable and more visually, so that we can visually see the relationship between them. Because a list, you know, I've looked at these lists of plans and they're just, it's overwhelming. So some of these that are very closely related, it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to have a, a way to make them more accessible and visually available.
Okay, that's definitely something for us to work on.
Like I said, not in the short term, but eventually. Any other questions? Oh, Eric.
This idea just occurred to me and it didn't occur to me before. Is it ever done or is it feasible to ever put a walking path next to railroad tracks? Because I actually have several times used, I've several times walked down the tracks from my house to the station theater. And it's actually a delightful walk. It's a different view of Urbana completely from what you would get otherwise. Doesn't seem to me to be, be any more dangerous to have a walking path next to a railroad track than next to a, a street with, with a busy street especially. So is that, is that, is there some fundamental reason why one would never do that?
It's owned by the railroad.
Such paths can and do exist. The key is, is through the railroad tracks in our town, the edge of the path can be no closer than 25 feet of the center line of the tracks. So if you look at that corridor width either side of the tracks, that's putting a path pretty far away, which is typically on private property, what have you. We have casually looked at a downtown to Carl campus railroad path. And that would be a nice connection as long as the rail line is still active. Absent the rail line, boom, we can get it done much easier. But that's usually the constraints we have to work with.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? Mike?
So I understand this is a comprehensive plan and this is probably a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I noticed in the, in the memo to the council that there is no, no fiscal impact, no dollar amount assigned to any of this. I assume it's a wide range. But I note with interest that there is no attempt to assign any kind of range of impact to the city of the cost of, of what we're talking about here. What are we looking at?
Well, this being, this being a regional plan, it kind of covers the whole county and they, they weren't getting down to the specifics of costs. Our individual plans, our bicycle master plan, when we come back with that, that will have a little more closer look and it'll have some estimates on those costs. But yeah, it's, it's really just a vision. So it's as these product, as projects are adopted into the CIP, we look at the costs closer then.
Okay. So we envision it and we pass it now. And this is certainly not a criticism of you or the process, but we envision everything and then we decide later what it costs and whether or not we support the vision once we know what it costs.
Not exactly.
I'm putting you in a spot.
Yeah, sorry.
I, that's one of the difficulties that I have with this is we, we embrace a vision without really knowing what we're asking for in terms of cost to taxpayers. It's a difficult thing. It's a difficult thing to, to, to say, yes, I support this when we just don't know ultimately what that means. And I understand it's, it, it stretches across multiple taxing authorities. So that's, that is a difficulty in and of itself. But at the same time, I think it is important that we understand that if we adopt this, that there may be some fiscal realities down the road that ultimately make us not be able to meet all of the, all of the visions in the plan.
If we're, are we now in a period where we can do council discussion and not just questions? Because I, I have a, I'd like to make a comment if that's okay.
I think you can make a comment.
Okay, good, good. Okay. So it does seem to me that the plan is, is more than a vision, although implicit in the plan is a whole series of choices about what kind of infrastructure we will support for what kind of activity. It seems to me that some of the choices that are implicit in this plan as compared to other choices we might make would, may have a negative cost. We could, for example, say that we have a different vision where every private automobile can go from one corner of the county to another corner of the county in 15 minutes or whatever. That we would, you know, just pave the area over with intersecting roads that would accommodate pretty high volume and maybe speed of personal cars. So I don't think that the vision here is necessarily, it may be one that where the incremental cost, some aspects of it may be where the incremental cost is positive compared to alternative divisions. Other aspects of it may very well be, may very well have negative incremental costs. And I don't think we could, I don't think it's really possible to cost it out until one makes, basically it seems to me, and I will, you know, I will support this, but basically it seems to me that it's a document that says this is the direction that the community wants to go in terms of the kinds of transportation alternatives that, that we want to encourage as a community or that we want to empower individuals to, to undertake.
Yeah, I'll add on to that a little bit. I think a lot of the recreational trails, at least it's shown in develop, in new developments or existing developments will actually add value to the neighborhood, to the homes. So in that way, you get a payback for recreational trails. And then as far as the transportation trails and bike paths go, you have the increase in safety. And that's always something you can, I don't know if you could put a dollar amount on that, but it's a, it's a worthy goal to assign value to as we go through the budgeting process. And then just to kind of emphasize Eric's point about the railroad path. I know that's something we've talked about before and, you know, Bill, I've, I've walked that path too. And you can walk from the Cancer Center down to downtown Urbana in like seven minutes. And that's probably faster if you can drive because there's four or five stoplights in there. So making that connection would be an economic development tool too, because you have, how many, 10,000 people working at Carl, but not all right there. But a lot of people working there. And making that connection to downtown would definitely be an advantage as far as economic development goes.
Just to try to answer some of the questions on the fiscal impact. It is, it is a regional plan and it's a little more complicated to assign cost. But in looking at the networks, a lot of these, a lot of these networks would occur with private development and, you know, might be in addition to sidewalks or an alternative connection. So the plan shows where those connections would be. And as these areas, areas develop, that would become part of the cost of the development. A lot of these connections might be eligible for grants, special enhancement program grants or grants related to recreational trails that the state offers from time to time. On major streets like Olympian, the facilities really get born with these major grants and allocations that we have from the federal and state governments. A lot of the links are really just designations that the cost relate to the paint on the pavement, sort of a operational almost or signage, which I think we budget each, each year. And a lot of these are also shown within parks. So those would be the responsibility of the park district. So I know it is overwhelming because there's so, so much, so many networks shown here, but I think there would be just a very small portion that would even, you know, come to the city council for a fiscal impact. So that's just an observation, but very good question on what's the cost of, of this big vision that we have.
Just a minor follow-up.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate that. But it just, it, it just strikes me that we seem to be, and I appreciate your comments, Libby. You're saying, okay, the council needs to approve this, but very little will come back to us for any kind of additional approval. And therefore, what we're approving tonight is kind of a, we are in essence blind to the costs, but we are approving it, hoping for the best. And maybe I'm wrong there. I'm, I'm just trying to understand this.
No, I, I think you would definitely see the details as they come forward, whether it's part of a subdivision plat or a grant agreement or some of the IDOT agreements. You may not see the park district facilities because city doesn't really have purview over those. But I think you will see in some form all of these links. It may not have a hit on the city's general fund or in the budget, but you will see it in other forms.
What would you say in this plan is, as a percentage is park district?
I'd have to look at the maps and, you know, I mean, I, I was just studying it and I noticed a lot of the connections are within the park districts. You could, you know, on the maps, the green areas would indicate that. So it's, I don't know, you know, maybe it's 20, 25% are shown in that area.
Aren't we talking about having option B, which is we adopt this as an amendment to the comprehensive plan with the stipulation that any inconsistencies will not be adopted and the city's existing and future plans will prevail?
No, I, I understand that.
So, you know, we're not, we're not committing ourselves to do this. And it's really kind of impossible to predict where the money's going to come from and, you know, in what order and how much things are going to cost in future years. So it's just an outline of what we'd like to do, but you can't really get that precise, I don't think.
So the bottom line is we approve this. And I guess what you're saying is we're not necessarily bound to expenditures on any given project.
No, we're not. Yeah, we have to implement it and that's a whole step, separate set of steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric?
So this, this is, this is step zero in spending money. You usually think that step one is authorization and two is appropriation, but this is aspiration.
Well, the one thing I would say is I aspire to, if we're going to have bike paths, maybe we ought to have a walking path designated on this right side of the, of every bike path. So that the bicyclers can watch out for the pedestrians, kind of like the cars have to watch for the bicyclers now. How about that?
Okay, we have an ordinance here. Do we have a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Reluctant, yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole.
Yes, that was me. We met November 3rd, two weeks ago in a special meeting following the regular city council meeting. And we had one item on the agenda and we forwarded that to city council on a divided voice vote with a recommendation for approval. That's resolution number 2014 11 dash 059R, resolution to endorse the Champagne Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study Long Range Transportation Plan 2040 for the committee. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Jacobson. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, reports of special committees. You are doing fine, sir. We appreciate it.
You're doing great, Mike.
Reports of special committees. No reports of special committees? Reports of officers. I will briefly report the, oh, we, okay, go ahead. You go first. Bill Gray.
I wanted to remind you, invite you and any of the public to please come to our ribbon cutting for the Boneyard Creek Beautification Project. It's this Friday at 11:00 AM at the corner of Griggs and Ray Street Northwest Corner. Knowing that the temps are what they are, it may be a little bit on the brief side, but even so, we'll do a ceremonial ribbon cutting. And if you haven't been there in the last month or two, it's really come together quite nicely. Most of the landscaping is done. Of course, it'll be much better in the springtime, et cetera, as time goes on. But we're going to have a ribbon cutting. So 11 o'clock this Friday, the 21st.
Okay. Have you all been to see it yet? It's pretty impressive. All right, thank you. I'd like to say that a group of us went to France at our expense, I have to say. And we had a really nice time. The people in Tionville treated us very well and they were very appreciative of Kermit Harden. And it was a real privilege, I think, for us to be able to go there with him because he was in Patton's Army that helped liberate, that liberated Tionville. And they were celebrating the 70 years after this event. And Mr. Harden is actually a hero, but he's a very modest man. And I was glad that his son wrote up the history of his father in World War II. And I think we should put it on our website because it's really quite touching. And so it was very much worth our while. And I will tell you that the city council in Tionville has 44 people. They, they have sort of a commissioned form of government. And so it's different from ours. But they're very, it's a beautiful city and they have a nice river, the Moselle River, and parks and everything. And it's very civilized. And they were very kind to us. And they put up with our fractured French. Anyone else have a report?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to report that the enterprise zone continues to make progress. The park district last week gave its approval on Tuesday night and the county board on Thursday night gave its tentative approval. Tomorrow night, the school board will take it up. And then the county board on Thursday night of this week is expected to give its final approval. So we're making great progress on that.
And Prairie Fruits Farms wanted to be in the enterprise zone. So that was very nice. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I went to the benefit for Rusty Chisholm in St. Joe, the spaghetti dinner. And I know Eric went and the chief was there. And it was just really impressive. The number of people that turned out for that, I think they sold over 700 tickets. There were probably 1,000 people there on and off. And that was even considering that St. Joe football team was in the playoffs and in, playing in Wilmington. And they had that being broadcast live. So people could watch that there too. But I'm sure they would have had more if it wasn't for the playoffs. So I'm just proud of both of my hometowns. And St. Joe is my original hometown. And I just wanted to say I'm proud of the people and have warm thoughts and sincere appreciation. I just wanted to say I'm proud of the people, and if warm thoughts and sincere appreciation could be good medicine, I think he got a big dose of medicine Saturday night.
Very good. Eric?
Yeah, I'll just second what Bill said. I came away from that feeling like it was just, just feeling so good about the, about the event, the people. We, we sat with the chief of another small fire department, and Naomi is the, Naomi's dad was a chief of volunteer fire company in a little town whose entire social life revolved around the fire department. So it was just a, it was just a terrific, it was just a wonderful event for her, because it brought her back to her roots, and the whole thing was just, just gorgeous, yeah.
Reports of officers, I guess we've finished that. New business, ordinance number 2014-11-106, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, revising Article 9 to prevent, to, excuse me, Freudian slip, permit electronic message board displays on signs in the Conservation Recreation Education zoning district.
I'd like to introduce our planning division intern, Matt Regic, to give the presentation. Hi, thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, the text amendment would allow for the operation of electronic message board displays within the CRE districts, and it would be governed by mostly the same restrictions that currently govern the electronic displays within the B3 General Business District. The primary intent of this text amendment is to allow the public entities within the C3, CRE districts to take advantage of electronic displays when transmitting messages of importance to the general public. Electronic displays are already in use at Urbana High School and Urbana Middle School, both of which are currently within a CRE district, and the proposed text amendment would allow the city to bring those, both of those signs into conformance with the zoning ordinance. The use of electronic displays could allow facilities within the CRE districts, almost all of which are publicly owned, to more rapidly reflect changing circumstances and update the sign accordingly, and that could be especially helpful in a situation such as a school closure, or something of that nature. As shown in the memo, the zoning ordinance currently restricts electronic displays in the B3 district in terms of area, animation, illumination, and in other ways prescribed by the zoning ordinance, and many of those would be, are included in the text amendment. And some private land uses are allowed within the CRE districts, but it's important to emphasize that currently only one parcel within all of the CRE districts is privately owned. The rest are all owned by either the Urbana Park District or some other public entity. Many of the other private uses are permitted within the district, but only after acquiring a certain permit, and whichever review board is in charge of administering that permit could also place certain restrictions on the use of electronic displays, and potentially prohibiting them outright, and however it sees in the context of the surrounding area. And as mentioned earlier, the B3, the restrictions that currently are in effect in the B3 district would be transferred to the CRE district, but in a slightly more strengthened manner. Permitting electronic displays within the CRE districts would allow the largely public uses within them to more effectively transmit news and information in much the same manner that certain businesses within this, within certain areas of the city are allowed to advertise. And the proposed text amendment would benefit uses, mostly public uses within the CRE districts, but do so while still maintaining the city's commitment to manage signage and minimize visual clutter. At the November 6th Plan Commission meeting, two commissioners did voice concerns about the amendment possibly leading to a proliferation of electronic displays within the CRE districts. However, staff is not concerned about a proliferation of electronic displays within the CRE districts, mostly because there's really not many manually operated message displays within the CRE districts right now. As was mentioned earlier, the Park District only plans to replace the sign at the Phillips Recreation Center, and does not intend to place any new electronic displays within conservation lands. The actual text amendment itself involves inserting two phrases within the text that governs electronic display use. It would include the CRE district along with the B3 district as districts in which electronic displays would be used, and it would also specify a maximum of 50 square feet for electronic displays and wall signs within the CRE districts. With this in mind, it's important to emphasize that this text amendment would largely serve public institutions within the CRE districts while still managing the distribution of signage. The Urbana City Council has the following options regarding this plan case: can either approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendment as is, approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendment with specified suggested changes, or deny the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. The Urbana Plan Commission on November 6th, 2014, by a vote of five to two, recommended approval of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment as attached. City staff likewise recommends approval. Also, I would like to mention that Don Owen, the Urbana School District Superintendent, was not able to make it tonight, but he did want to issue a message in support of the text amendment. He stated that he appreciates the city's work, and that the signs are a valuable communication tool to the school district, and at this time, the district does not have plans to add any additional electronic signage. Are there any questions?
Eric?
What was the thinking behind bringing forth a zoning amendment as opposed to a variance for the Park District for that property?
So, really, the way we administer signs is, we like to keep things tidy, and there is a blanket prohibition in the zoning ordinance that says only B3 is where these are allowed. So we weren't sure if it would be allowed as a variance even. We think this is the cleanest way to do it.
I think Bill was next.
Couple things. Seems like what usually happens when you bring a text amendment is, it's not what's underlying that I find us a problem with, it's something that was in there already that isn't changing. But in measuring the illumination levels, it says first, at least 30 minutes past sunset, and with the electronic display turned on, a light level reading is, is taken, and then you take one with it turned off and compare the difference from ambient. But when a display is turned on, it can have a lot of different light levels, and I think typically, when I've seen these, it's turned on like at full white level, it's specified full white or full on or something, because you could have a, you know, one letter in the middle, display a "i" or something, it wouldn't be very bright. So it seems like, would that just be a technical change? We could put in there, turned on at, at 100% or at full white value without sending it back to the Plan Commission, or is that something that we'd have to go back? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I understand. Yes, the, the legal ad for this public hearing did state that it was just this entire section. I think it would be safest, though, for us to bring that back as a separate amendment. We are doing a omnibus update to the zoning ordinance within the next few months, so that would probably be safest.
Okay, and was that the intention? Was it, when you had, when you do the first measurement, it would be like the brightest possible image on the screen?
You know, that was a previous staff person who had written that. I believe the intention, though, was to have it at full brightness.
Okay. And then, just one other question, I guess. For the signs that are existing that are animated, like on, for the middle school especially, would this bring, would that mean that they'll stop that, since that would be not in compliance anymore? Have they agreed to stop the animation?
Yeah, so we've been in contact with the school districts, and they have agreed in principle to abide by the rules that become adopted.
Okay, thanks.
Diane?
I just had a question about advertising, and it was raised at the Plan Commission regarding third-party advertising on one of these signs. I just wondered why that isn't specifically addressed in this amendment. Not that it's, not that it's likely, but, you know, we're, we're looking at the future as well, so.
So, yeah. So these signs are, they're allowed as on-premise signs, and normally, they just have ads for whatever the business is on that site. The school, or I'm sorry, the Park District mentioned that they would have advertisements for events, or tickets, memberships, things that would be technically off-site, but they would be sold at that facility, so we would consider those on-site. But we, if we saw an ad that was advertising something off-site, not related to that site, then we would, we would get them to stop.
So third-party advertising would be considered non-compliance?
Right.
But it doesn't specifically say that in here, does it?
No, but it-
Or am I missing something?
Well, there's a separate, separate section for off-premise advertising, and that's covered under the outdoor advertising, signs and structures section.
Okay. In addition, we need, we must clear of content-related regulations in our sign ordinance, and that would be dealing with the content of the sign. Okay, Mike Madigan is next. Are you finished, Diane, or not? Did you want to say something else?
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Mike Madigan, then Eric.
All right, this intrigues me. So, here we are, saying we have these public entities that want to avail themselves of the same types of advertising as current private entities, for the most part, correct? Which I'm 100% for, yet we are at the same time saying we want to restrict those private entities from raising funds for whatever purpose by selling content on those signs to a private entity. What is the rationale for that?
Is this something that the school district's doing or proposing to do? How did this even come up?
I don't even know if they're proposing it.
Yeah, because I think we are very limited on content regulation, off-premise, on-premise. It's really, it's a free speech issue, and I think that we need to be very careful, and, you know, unless there's an example that I can respond to and confer with our attorney, I really-
No, I just think Diane raised the question about others advertising on these public boards, and what I took from the response was that that would not be, would not be allowed.
I think we would need to have some discussion about that because of these restrictions, so.
Because of what restrictions? I mean-
Free speech, protecting free speech.
Right, right.
And we would need to look at case law, and it's always evolving, so we learn a lot about this, and, you know, I think if there's a specific request, we will study it and come back.
Well, it just seems to me that some of these, well, all, all of these public entities, schools in particular, are always looking for ways to raise funds, and if we are allowing these electronic message boards, which I'm 100% in favor of, I, I would, I would urge that we look at allowing, in addition to the electronic message board, allowing them to, to actually sell time on those. I just don't see that that is an issue or a problem. I'm sure that this, that the public entities would never sell time or content to someone that would be inappropriate, but it could be of benefit to the public entity. It could subsidize, you know, some of the things that they're trying to raise funds for. That just seems to me to be a no-brainer.
Eric?
I think that the prospect of, I understand that, you know, we're, we're having a very hypothetical conversation, because you're not asking to sell commercial, I guess I'm asking, I'm asking you, the Park District people, I'm sure you don't have, you, the last thing on your mind is to sell, you know, is to put commercials on, on, on that sign, or maybe not, maybe I'm assuming too much. But I actually see potential problems on that, and so let me just give one right away. The schools are embroiled in all sorts of issues about school lunches and nutrition, and I could see that a lot of people might really have a problem, and I would be one of them, with a commercial message on a school electronic sign that, that advertised, you know, sugary sodas. Other people might not have an issue with that, but it's potentially a really, potentially it's really a problematic issue. So I think that without, and then if you do get into that, then you really do get into regulating content, whereas if you have a blanket prohibition against, against third-party advertising on these signs, then, then I think there isn't an issue of regulating content. These signs are for the purpose of the, the entity, or for the purpose of, of the entity that, whose property they're on, whether it be school or Park District.
Who's next? Bill?
I'm not going way into the free speech issue, but I think for consistency's sake, if you zone a sign on premises of a certain size and dimensions, and it looks like it fits into the business neighborhood, then people come to expect that sign to represent the business it's in front of. So then if half the businesses start advertising other things, then you start going down the street looking at all these signs, and it seems like it could be a little confusing, like whether, you know, if they're advertising clothes when they're a restaurant or something, you know. Just for consistency, it seems like if, for on-premise signs, you should have it related to what's there, and for signs in other areas, they're free to sell advertising where people would expect it, and, you know, it's just kind of a style and expectations thing, I think.
Mike?
So here's what I know. My eight-year-old attends Thomas Bane, and we own a business, and so we are regularly solicited by the school to provide free or reduced-price meals for the PTA, for the teachers, to provide gift cards, and those types of things, and we are happy to do it, because we love that school. They're outstanding people, and without us asking, in return, they put in their newsletters and in other types of publications from the school, thanks to our business. I'm not asking for that, I don't- I'm not asking for that, I don't expect that, but they do that in thanks. I don't see this as being any different. I, I think that if I have an electronic message center in front of my business, I'm going to advertise things that are going on at my business. I'm not going to advertise other businesses. But when you're talking about a public entity, I think that's different. I just, I think that a public entity, be it a Park District, a school district, or what have you, here's an opportunity to potentially partner with other businesses, actually businesses, you know, private sector entities that can help you raise funds or offset your costs. So, so I do, I do think there is a difference. I mean, I appreciate what's being said here and that there could be some confusion and that kind of thing. But, but ultimately, I think that this comes down to, if a school board decides they want to do this, why should we stand in the way of that? If a park board decides if they want to do this kind of thing, why should we stand in the way of that? We should allow the sign and then we should let that elected or appointed board decide whether or not they are willing to go down that road. To me, it just, it just, it's a, it's a, it's something that we should, we should allow others to decide as public officials.
Eric?
Just a point of information. If we vote to approve this text amendment as it is, the only message, the only messages that would be permitted would be messages related to the facility whose property it's on. Is, is that correct? Or?
You know, I, if I might, I believe, you know, that's been the use. And I would be really surprised if they wanted to make another use. But particularly in recent years, we have needed to move away from any content regulation in our sign ordinance to keep it lawful. And that has, and I, I agree with Bill, it's confusing to have, you know, you want to see the signage for where you're at and, you know. And that's really what happens most of the time. People have a sign and they advertise what's there. But there is less and less ability to, to regulate the content of signage because of court cases. And so, we should not do that here. Now, if for some reason the school district would come to us and say, hey, we want to have this other use, perhaps we could study it at that time. But there's been no request and no indication from the school district or the Park District that they want to use these signs for, other than information for their facility.
But if I may ask a follow-up, because I want to be really clear on this. If we approve this as it is, are, will the school district and the Park District implicitly have the right to sell commercial time on these signs? You know, the question is, and maybe, maybe this is a question for Mr. Simon. The, would, 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 under this ordinance, as it's worded, would the school district and the Park District even need to ask us if they wanted to sell, you know, if they wanted to advert, you know, sell advertising time to Coca-Cola?
The ordinance right now, as I read it in the packet, is silent. But here, here is the problem with the entire discussion. I'm not saying anyone's right or wrong. You're getting into an area which you will ultimately probably deal with when it comes up with electronic billboards and all of that. You're getting into an area that is constantly changing and you're trying to anticipate changes. The First Amendment clearly protects speech, but there are different levels of protection. For instance, political speech and religious speech are the penultimate protected areas of speech. When you get down to commercial speech, it is protected, but reasonable limitations can be placed on commercial speech. The problem is what is reasonable. You go further down the line, speech that harms, hate speech, pornographic speech, they are not protected, even though they are speech. You get into, and I think Libby kind of alluded to it when she was talking about hypotheticals. The University of Illinois, for instance, has given naming rights to its Assembly Hall to a private entity. Obviously, that's advertising. You have banners on public playing fields that advertise, very much like you see in a privately-owned baseball park. Some of these parks are owned publicly, they're built with public bond money. You then get into what kind of speech and what are the advertising? You know, Park District advertising swimwear. Might be related, might not. What happens if the Park District happens to have like a golf course, a pro shop where they sell swimwear? So, they're advertising some designer swimwear versus they do not have a pro shop, like a golf shop, but yet some swimwear designer comes to them and says, we'd like to advertise because we know you have a swimming pool. Every one of these cases can be dealt with, with a different analysis. And I think where Libby is alluding to and going is, in this greater context, there has to be some flexibility built into the concept of commercial speech to allow for reasonable, rational decision-making on each issue. It, you can't put a hard and fast rule on what is acceptable and permissible and what can be regulated in the context of commercial speech. It pretty much has to be a case-by-case basis. The only guiding principle, other than reasonable, which is a very difficult standard to apply in the law because what's reasonable to one may not be reasonable to another, is that the decision-making process, which supports reasonableness, cannot be arbitrary and capricious. I, you allow it for one and you have the exact same situation, you deny it for another. So, there has to be some flexibility in how you permit or choose not to permit access of, of that kind of speech to these kinds of signs.
Diane?
Well, I'd like to bring the discussion back to the ordinance before us. I'm really sorry. I'm going to support this. I think it provides some flexibility to the Park District, to the school district. I think it certainly will save staff time and I think it'll serve the public better. And also, it will, it will allow us to bring the two existing signs at the middle school and high school actually into conformance, which they're currently non-conforming. So, on the whole, I think it's a good idea. And I would then move, we haven't had a motion yet, right?
You're making it.
I'll move it, okay. I move ordinance number twenty fourteen dash eleven dash one oh six, which is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, which revives this Article nine to permit electronic message board displays on signs in the CRE Conservation, Recreation, Education, Zoning District, Plan Case twenty-two forty-four dash T dash fourteen.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Bill?
Yeah, I had one more question about UVI property. And I meant to ask this when we were talking about the Boneyard District because we had a Boneyard District zoning and that property too. And do they, can they, do they have to pay any attention to us or can they just do what they want?
I have, I have a favorite response to that question. First, that's in Champaign, that big sign. And I think they've actually modified their zoning ordinance to allow what's happening there. But the way I'd like to answer that question is we have a difference of opinion with the university as to whether our zoning ordinance applies. And in order to resolve the difference of opinion would take some kind of huge court case. And I don't think either party has been interested in testing it to that extent, so.
University of Illinois has sovereignty, according to the University of Illinois.
I remember my first night on council, we spent hours and hours talking about the great windmill. And this, of course, was potentially an enormous conflict between the university and the city, which was fortunately averted. And so, we never tested that issue in court and I'd be just delighted if we never did.
We, we just finessed that one, right? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
That motion carries. We have ordinance number twenty fourteen dash eleven dash one oh seven and ordinance ascertaining the prevailing wages for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. It looks like somebody forgot to do this. So, here's Elizabeth Hannan.
Yeah, this is really just a housekeeping item. State law requires us to establish prevailing wage annually. This is the wage that contractors on public works projects are required to pay their employees. And so, when we realized that this had been overlooked, we wanted to correct that as soon as possible.
Okay, any questions for Elizabeth? Yes, Mike?
So, is there any liability to the city for not having done this on a timely basis?
Not, not that I was able to determine. I didn't find a penalty or, or anything, but I'm, you know, it's possible.
Okay. Why did this happen?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that question. This was supposed to have been done in June and I was not here in June.
Could someone who was here in June ask, answer why it didn't happen?
I was here in June and I have no idea why this didn't happen.
So, I guess we've gone right to the top and we have no idea why.
Mistakes happen. We fix them when we find them, when we find out about them, we really try to fix them.
Seriously, not, I'm not trying to be sarcastic here. I was just curious about, it's just one of those things that slipped through the cracks, apparently. All right.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move approval of the prevailing wage ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
So, being the pivotal vote, I guess I could be honorary here, but I find myself not usually in this position, but I'll vote yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
That motion carries. I want to thank you all very much. Since we have no more business, this meeting is adjourned.